Wait a minute. Yeah, video. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Call to order the December twenty eighth, December twenty sixth Foxfire Village Council Work Session. Let the record show that all council members are present, as well as one member in the audience. Okay.
Talk fast, I'm not sure how long this is going to last.
Have a motion. Is there any, are there any changes to the agenda?
No. No?
No.
I have none.
Okay. Motion to accept the agenda?
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first item up is special event ordinance review and update. And I apologize, but I do not, I cannot put my hands on the special event ordinance. I had it, I had it all marked up and ready for discussion, and now I can't find it. But what I want to propose, and maybe we can talk about this at our council meeting, is basically, if you read it, it has a lot to do with our ability to control special events. And it really is kind of a use, and it goes into the use of alcohol, and how you use special permits for alcohol, and it talks about it on public property as well as private property. Now, I don't really think that we should be telling people what kind of events they can have on their own private property.
Unless it violates...
A noise ordinance, and that's a different situation. Right, so my proposal...
It has new dance. I mean, I'm not being funny, but I mean, there are certain things we just don't allow.
Right, right. But, and that's, that's all part of our...
Our ordinance.
Right, our ordinance is in our zoning, is what you can do, what you can't do. And we've already said that the alcohol is not something we would allow on public property anyway, so, or on our property. And what I'd like to do is get the council's opinion on just either removing it or severely downgrading it to basically, you know, not having a special event ordinance.
I think I want to read it first.
Well, yeah, and that was my, that was my point today, that we were going to read through it. It's a short one, I can't even find it in this book right now. But it's a short, it's a short ordinance, and it's a pretty quick read. What I will do is I will copy it and send it out to everyone, and then you can look at it.
Doesn't, is that a zone, it's not a zoning ordinance, that's in the...
I think it's in just the ordinance.
Yeah, so we don't, I guess, it doesn't need to come from planning and zoning, that's what I'm asking.
Correct, no.
Which ordinance?
It is an ordinance.
If I recall correctly, though, that, that section, that paragraph, it's labeled as special events. But that is the part of the overall ordinance that relates to those park rules and stuff like that. Is it just changing the terminology, just getting rid of the word special event and just have... Because if you, if you eliminate that paragraph, you're going to eliminate the ordinance that support. If I recall correctly, I haven't done this off of my memory. You, if you eliminate that whole section, then you're going to eliminate the code that backs up the rules that we just...
No, I think we created an ordinance specifically for the park. Thank you, Mary. It is twelve twenty-nine, and it's basically regulation of outdoor special, it's, we have consumption or serving of alcohol and beverages, which we've already said we're not going to allow.
And in, in ordinance, we put that.
Right. So this article, as far as outdoor special events, if we read it, I think we should just strike it, because it's, again, it's saying what special events. And right now, if someone wants to have an event at the park, we don't ask them what it is, what specifically they're going to do. And even if they did, they would still have to meet noise ordinances and...
So, so there is a, we did create entirely separate ordinance?
For the park, yes.
For the park rules and village property, besides, besides just the park? Okay, so yeah, then, if that's the case, and I think that article too, we probably could just eliminate it.
And then we have a regulation of special events on private property, which I don't think we have any, I don't think we should, you know, I think that's kind of foolish, but...
Well, you know what, though? I don't think I would just strike that, because there are some regulations in terms of, you know...
But see, the way this reads, special outdoor events may take place on private property. If the village clerk has issued a permit for the event, we don't issue permits for special events on your property. The clerk may grant the permit if the director of public safety or his designated determines a special event will not materially endanger the public. See, again, we don't issue permits if you're going to have a party at your house.
Well, but, okay, but if you're going to have a party at your house, but this is special events, and maybe what we need to do is we need to get a definition of special events. I mean, there are things like, if you want to have...
You want to have a wedding at your house, you can do it.
Yeah, but that is a special event.
Yeah, but we don't, that's okay.
You can do it.
I would, I would, I would argue that that's okay, and that's up to a person. If they're going to do that, they might have to get a, a permit for a temporary tent, maybe. But as far as having a band or serving alcohol on their property...
Oh, wait, 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 wait. You put a band and it's amplified music? That requires some kind of oversight from the village, trust me. Where I lived in Chicago, we had a guy that basically had a rock concert on the street once a year. And he had to go around and get every single person who lived within a certain number of feet of that property to buy off on that.
But that's on the street, too?
No, it was on his private property.
Oh, okay. But that's a noise ordinance thing, if you ask me. If he's, if he's disturbing the community, again, we don't, we don't make people get permits. Someone could have a wedding at their house and have a band pull up, and we, we wouldn't.
Yeah, let me throw this out to the members. If this isn't causing us a problem?
Well, it does cause us a problem, because we don't issue permits. We don't have, we don't have basically a person who's going to say, you know, a director of public safety that's going to say that this, this is not going to endanger the public. We, we don't...
Okay.
I mean, that's the thing, is that there's a lot of things in here that we're referring to things that we don't have or we don't do.
But what do we want? Since we, we, we've never used or never had this ordinance coming to play? Does it hurt this habit in here?
Well, the whole regulation of alcohol is...
Well, it's also at other places. We'd have to, it'd have to change to conform with what we discussed in the prior meetings about alcohol.
Have we looked at what other communities do? Because I think we need to do that before we go in here and start striking.
Well, and the other reason I agree with you there is because this is talking about the flow of traffic, the rights of adjacent or surrounding property owners. So there's something in here that protects the property owners next door.
Well, what I, what I would suggest is that, number one, we, I'll get this copy out to everyone. But there's a lot of stuff in here that I don't think we should even have in here. And if we want to keep, like, a paragraph in here, I think that's reasonable. But I think all this other stuff, and again, regulation of special events on private property, again, maybe rights of adjoining pop, property owners or something, but...
I think we need to look at other municipalities. It's a good place to go to see what kind, because that tells us the kinds of things they've had to deal with. And maybe we're not dealing with it now, but we don't want to be so wide open that when somebody does something, we have no way to enforce anything. I'm not saying, I'm not trying to overly restrict what someone does on their private property, but I think we need to look at what some other municipalities do. If they don't do anything, no problem. But if they've done some things, we should be able to look at that and go, okay, that makes sense in our village, that does not make sense in our village.
Right. Well, one of the things that I take exception to, now, I'm on my private property. This specifically says, no alcoholic beverages other than malt beverages and unaffordably...
That's for public property, which we've already said we need to do anyway.
Oh, okay, that was, oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were still on the...
But they're here, they're saying, they have to have approval to do, serve alcohol on your own property.
I don't think that we have any control over that. Yeah, it, I think we need to look at this, because it's, it's... Okay, we'll do have to... I'm going to send out a copy to you guys.
To us with your question, my highlights, your question marks, and I'll look at it and go from there.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to look at.
You want me to give you a word copy? You can just copy it right out of the U D O.
Sure.
It's easy.
Sure, okay. That's what I had, but I can't find any of it now.
I know you printed it.
I know, and I lined for the...
Must be that Christmas vacation day.
I don't know. Okay. So anyway, I think maybe by our council meeting, we can, we can come to, at least have a discussion and maybe come to an agreement.
Okay.
Very quickly, Central Pines Regional Council. This is, this used to be Triple J, or Triangle J, I'm sorry. They have reached out to us to see if we want to be members of their group. And we were members of their group a couple of years ago. They helped us a lot with COVID relief reporting and things like that. But they have also done a lot of work with other communities as far as wastewater control, not wastewater, runoff of water and engineering help. They've helped with H R as far as job descriptions and salary ranges. So I have a meeting with them, Lisa and I are meeting with them on January ninth. And I will update the council on whatever. And there is a fee, although this year the fee is for free. It's usually, I don't know, thirty or forty cents per resident is really what they charge municipalities. So it's not a lot of money for the services that they do provide. And I don't know how much their services cost, but these are all things that we're going to talk about. It's kind of like the league, but they, they focus on different things, so...
Why did they re-group?
They wanted to name it more of a, because we were kind of, when they were thinking about Triangle J, it was mostly Raleigh, Durham, and Chapel Hill. And it's really more, they're trying to expand into central, central North Carolina, Central Pines, so... Next item is the L P R license plate readers. Now, this is something I handed out to you.
Is that this?
Yes. And this is, as you know, Chad had brought this up before he left as far as just a discussion item. And Michael has also been looking into it. And if you've read any articles in the pilot, I believe the county or Carthage, or both, are looking into getting these, this equipment for their area. And I actually asked Michael to reach out to the county to see if we could piggyback off of any orders that they might have. But also, I believe Southern Pines is using these, we are not.
What is the service they provide?
What it is, is it's a camera. These are the safety, they're basically license plate readers, cameras. And what they do is, say, if you have an amber alert, or a senior silver alert, or they're looking for a car, or a person who they think might be driving a car. There's a database that these things are fed into. And if you're, if a car goes through this reader that's on the list, it notifies the police. And therefore, they can, they can, if they're in the area, they can pursue the car, or if they're, if it's something like they're trying to track someone, at least we know, yeah, they came through Foxfire at, you know, four o'clock in the morning.
So these cameras are just set throughout the village, I guess, like on Richmond or Hoffman?
Well, Michael was saying three, three...
And so on power, and they just, they're constantly pulling the data off a license plate?
So every time I drive down Hoffman or Richmond, it's going to play what time I drove in my license plate?
Yep, yes. You and anybody else, good guys, bad guys?
Stop reading the dark.
Yes, they do. And they're all over the state, they're all over the country, actually, these, these readers. And, you know, you might think that, you know, it's, they're everywhere. They're in the Asheville area, I know. Well, if you look at the map, Flock in the Carolinas.
Well, here, outlines the next page.
Oh, yeah, okay. Which is good, because the map might be a little tougher to read in black and white. But Rocky Mount, Greensboro, I'm pretty sure they're in Asheville, Boone.
Blackcomb.
Yeah.
Wayne, now you can never say that.
Fuque.
Fuque, that's it. Lake Clearwood is gone now.
So there's, there's, they're in a lot of places.
Rocky Dunes, got it?
Yep.
So anyway, my, my question to the council, and basically, you cannot buy these, these cameras from this, this is Flock, okay? They lease them, and it's three thousand dollars per camera per year, so it's not cheap.
Where did these numbers come from?
And then there's a...
Does she think we need two or three?
He said three.
Where's that?
There's one.
There's one, Richmond?
Yep, Hoffman.
Both ends of Hoffman.
Well, Hoffman by, I think he was going to do Hoffman by the store, and then Hoffman down here. Kind of like, so you could get them coming and going, or Ty Road, perhaps. So it's like this in a triangle here.
Oh, okay.
Now, could we do it with two? Maybe. But anyway, I guess my question is, is this something that we would even consider? Because if we won't consider it, then I'm going to have Michael not...
And the lease of the camera, that includes the software, the program and everything else?
Yes. And plus, if it, if it gets, you know, if there's something that's outdated, or whatever, you get the, your leasing.
Right. So Moore County, how involved is the county sheriff in this program?
They're the ones who were buying, actually, they were, I think they were looking into, they were looking into funding it. I don't know if the commissioners made a final decision on it.
So if it saves the county sheriff, puts one of these cameras right off of the, on Hoffman as you come across the tracks on two and eleven, and maybe another one down before you enter the village, and something on Richmond, and...
We only need one.
We don't, or none.
Richmond, maybe.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming the county...
Why are we going to do this? It seems like, you know, there'd be other law enforcement agencies in our area that are larger that would benefit more from, from it than us, you know?
Well, especially since Richmond and Hoffman are state-owned.
State-owned, yeah. Now, the only reason we, you know, our parks are just...
What, we wait and see what the county's going to do? If they go for cameras, they may play some up and down our area.
Sure, I would think so.
Maybe you'd have to buy one.
Or fair enough. If we just put one on our, put one on our streets.
So, so are you, are you opposed to the idea?
Potentially, I'm opposed.
I was originally opposed, but I'm not opposed anymore.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, because we're cameras all over the country right now. Nailed every day.
But what do we think, what do we think they're going to do for us? And how is the data used? How is the data stored? How long is the data stored? Is it on a cloud someplace? I just, I mean, the fact that...
Well, it's already there, you have to remember that. It's already there.
That's fine, but what, I guess what I'm asking is, what is it going to do for the village at nine thousand dollars a year?
Well, again, it's more of a public, it's more for public safety and for getting people off the street who shouldn't be on the street, or who could pose a danger to themselves or other people.
Okay, based, based on what, though?
Based on the fact that they've been, they, they know that they're in a car with either a kidnapped child, or there's a senior that's lost.
Are they running warrants against the license plate? I mean, I, I'm going to need to, I need to know what they're really collecting and how we're really using it.
And does that mean that, like our police chief, he'd have to daily look at it?
They would get notices on their phones.
Just a notice on the phone?
Yeah. They would get notices that, you know, a hit's been made on your camera, you know? Or, or looking for someone. I mean, I do know that Michael has indicated that when something serious happens, it's not necessarily your everyday thing, but when something serious happens, having information like this that you're, that can be collected is extremely helpful.
I think I'm with that. I'd like to see what the county, county commissioners approve, and I'd like to see where they're going to put them. Because if they put them on Hoffman, we don't need to put them on Hoffman. And if they put them on Richmond, we don't need to put them on Richmond, which tells me we may not need to put them, period. If the county's going to do it, I would write off the county.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
I agree, if they're going to come here.
I agree.
Let that pay for it.
Okay.
Well, and it's, and also, it's a state road, right? Does that make any difference?
Well, I don't know, we have our speed signs on the state road.
Well, that's true, yeah, that's true.
So I will relay your comments to Michael, and I'll just tell him to wait and see what the county does and see what's up with that, okay?
Okay.
Moving on, the next item is the water response system.
Easy peasy lemon squeezy. You guys have a rough draft, you guys have a rough draft. Read through it, we took the last years and just updated it, and Warren and Jesse got right on it. So if we have agreement on the verbiage, then what Lisa will do is she will put it on letterhead. Each individual council member needs to sign, needs to be filed by the eleventh of January, which we don't want to wait that long. So take a run through and see what you think.
I already read it.
I read, yeah, I sent it out, too, so...
And the only question I have is, and I understand that the local government commission, it's just an oversight of whether or not that our water system is being updated, kind of like a watchdog, I guess, is it? But my question is, how are these items, who chose these particular items? How, you know, and, and you say it's based on the audit, but the auditor, or the financial numbers, I understand it's based on the depreciation of an, of an item, but who selected, you know?
Warren, I don't know who selected it, but doesn't it cover all the major components of the system?
All, all components?
I said major components. We don't want to give the prosecution more than they ask for.
I think...
Well, yeah, I agree with that. I just wonder why these were selected? Is it just something, did we just boilerplate something else a couple of years ago? And I guess this is what, second year?
This is only, this is only the second year, this is...
And do we continue doing this? If we do make an improvement, if we address something, like, you know?
I think the big thing, the, the whole bottom line...
How much detail do we need to supply them?
Well, this was, this was fine as of last year. Now, the whole reason is because the, the infrastructure of the water department is over fifty percent depreciated. So that's kind of a red, a red flag, saying, you know, maybe you're letting your water system deteriorate to a point where it's not going to be viable. And I think once our new well comes online, that changes, that could very easily change where our depreciation is. And because our new well is not online, we're still over fifty percent depreciated. That new well coming on with all of those, with that asset base now being elevated and working, we could very well be on that fifty percent margin.
I thought one of the curious ones, one of the items, now was the testing and sampling. I mean, there's no... Why is that, I, I'm, you know, I saw, I don't have a problem putting this report together and getting information and submitting it and everything. I'm just kind of curious, why are we doing it? And testing and sampling? You know, every water purveyor in the United States has to do consumer confidence reports annually. We have to give a copy to our customer, we also have to submit to the, you know, to, to D E Q. So why is that paragraph even, why are we addressing that, that paragraph in this document?
Well, didn't you write this document?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, you didn't write it, I wrote it.
You wrote it, I just tweeted it, yeah.
I took last year's...
Took last year, yeah.
And just kind of rewrote some things, and added some...
So what's wrong with being in there?
Stuff like that.
Why is it there? We're talking about our equipment, we're talking about depreciation of our, of our facilities. That has nothing to do with...
Well, I, I guess it just has to do with...
And I don't want to reveal every point. I, I think you just, if everybody agrees to do it, just send it off. I'm just kind of curious why we do some stuff.
Isn't it more of an F Y I?
I, I would say, if I were to read this...
Yes, it is, that's all it is.
I would say that our drinking water, number one, is being monitored, as it should be. And it's also the quality of the water is where it needs to be. It's not like we've got chemicals or a Flint, Michigan going on here.
Which would be indicative of problems in the water system, potentially based on depreciations.
Which is what I would...
You could say that, I guess. Okay, anyways, I'm, I'm satisfied with the verbiage and everything. I think that it's everything in there that needs to be in there.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think this is good.
We do, we need a motion or stuff, or I just have...
Um, yeah, I think, yeah, let's make, let's make...
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll have Lisa get it on, she back tomorrow, she's back tomorrow?
Yes, she is.
I'll have Lisa get it on letterhead, and she can just let us know. The sooner we sign it and get it off, the better. I can submit it through a portal. There's a portal you can submit to, so, okay, done.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Go over it.
Next on item is, Mary, you're up again. This is the West End Fire Department radio upgrade.
Just to keep us in the loop, the original cost on those radios was thirty-two thousand three oh four. That's now come down to thirty thousand nine forty-seven, which is our split. Remember, this is a federal, a federal requirement unfunded, which is ridiculous. But they gave us the option to pay for the radios or get invoiced. I'm going to choose invoice unless somebody doesn't like it, because it's going to be a budget amendment and they want it to be exact. So, yeah, so that's where we are, and as soon as we get something, Tammy will let us know. And once we have the radios, they can invoice this. I just wanted to keep everybody in the loop, because that is going to lead us into in January the whole discussion with the county about capital funding requirements for the fire department. So, anyway, that's all I got on that.
Okay.
Done.
Next on the agenda are the engineering consulting services, Lynn and Morgan.
The last work session, we talked about compiling a list of engineering consultants from this area that we could possibly utilize. And so that's what the one hand out is. What I did is just a little bit of information from each of these firms that are local. There may be other firms, I think the way we left the last time was we were each going to go back and, and if, do a little research and, and come up with consultants doing work in this, you know, this Moore County area. And so that's what I did. We could, I don't need to go through each one of these, just read it through. If you have another engineering firm that you're aware of, I think if the last meeting someone mentioned one, I couldn't remember who it was, I wasn't sure, it was L K C. I know that L K C does a lot of work recently for Moore County. They're involved in the water supply, search for Moore County. M B D, Charles McGugan, again, consultant, engineering consultant. He does a lot of our current work, not a lot, does some of our current work. Works for Charles Underwood, is doing the submittals of the planning drawings for the well thirteen construction that's underway now. He also does our water supply plan and any updates to it, anytime we make a change to our system. So he's another engineering firm that we may want to consider. Years past, we've used Hydrostructure, they're out of Pittsburgh. They've recently, they were taken over by Dukes, which is a larger firm out of Illinois. Pardon?
Out of Elgin, yeah.
Yes, Elgin, yes, Illinois. We still have contact with them. Like I said, they did the last water supply alternative study back in two thousand and seven. They put that together for, again, that's information is in there, read about it. A few other firms that I just kind of, just talk to people, aware of their names and stuff like that, do a little research on them.
The Withers Ravenall, that's the one that a lot of towns around here, Southern Pines, Aberdeen, they speak very highly of that, just so you know.
So that's another one, except if we, we need to, as a group, and we want to do it tonight, or we need to sit down and decide, and it'll come, the second part of this topic is looking at engineering, contracting and what we need to have engineering optics do for us. And we can talk a little bit about it when we do that. But, yeah, I've heard a lot of good things about Withers Ravenall, they, and McGill, again, they're kind of a, more of a regional, you know, the southeast region, but they do have an office, you know, down in, in Pinehurst. Originally, they were out of Asheville, I believe, they generated in Asheville. But, yeah, these are, if you want to add to the list, or if you have some personal experience with any of these, and we can talk about it, and maybe when we get to the point, if we want to go the route contracting with a consultant for professional services, these are, this is a resource we can go to.
I will, I will also ask the Central Pines Regional Council...
Okay, yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
If they have any...
That's a good idea.
So if we choose, like, through, well, we could... So if we choose like three, well, we could send a proposal, request for proposal to all of them, correct?
Sure, that would be, that would be the, the.
The way to do it.
Way to do it, yeah.
Do we want to eliminate anybody from the list?
Well, I think once we look at, once we look.
Yeah, they can look at the list and everybody look research on it, see if there's, you know.
That's, that's all, that's all I'm saying. We don't want, I mean, I, I used to live in Illinois, Elgin's a nice little place if you like casinos, but
For a while.
Yeah, we need, and even if we.
Well, you've got a lot of offices in Pittsburgh. And we've done with them in the past, and they've done work for us in the past.
Even Asheville to me seems far, it's far away, yeah.
But they all have local offices. They, all, all these firms that I've listed.
You can have a local office, but if your headquarters is in Illinois, at some point, if you have to deal with that corporate structure, I just think that becomes more difficult. I'm not saying they don't do good work, Warren, I'm just saying it just.
No, no, I see, I see what you're saying. I would, I would rather deal with a, a local entity also. They, a lot of these local firms, they do a lot for their communities.
They have a lot of skin in the game.
They do, they, they're on, they're on local committees, they're on local boards, they're on local authorities. So yes, I agree, I would definitely favor a
Animal.
Yes, a local firm. Okay. Another thing that I want to talk about, the, so the next topic is the engineering consulting professional services themselves. Yeah, the, the challenge that we as a village and as council members, you know, we're facing the challenge of meeting the demands, water demands of our customers during the warm, dry summer months. And last summer, we went through water restrictions. Presently, we're dealing with these short-term, term issues by, we're trying to increase reality, reality, yeah, the reliability of our existing production facilities and also trying to increase the production capacity. That's the reason for the new well. That's for the reason to, for the investigation of rehabbing number six. Now, we've done several things on the, on the production side in this attempt to meet the current production demands during the summertime. But, and just to list some of them, we made improvements to the piping, the feed systems, the monitor reporting systems. Also changed some of the ways that we, our procedures, we now gather, oh, more monitoring data. We're taking in the daily production reads, which is something that hadn't been done in the past. So this enables us to have a, a little bit better handle and be able to anticipate, we're not going to anticipate, but at least if something, you know, production facilities, there is a problem, we're aware of it and we can respond a lot quicker. And like I said, so these kind of things have been, you know, it's just a, a dread, you know, we're trying to address just, you know, potential failures that we can have in, in the future going forward that would put us in a crisis situation. And we do have some, a piece of new equipment that we're going to install. And that's going to be on the elevated tank. Right now, we have no, you know, we have to physically, well, take a pressure test at the base of the tank to find out how much of water is in the tank.
I thought there was a meter in it.
Well, there, there is just one little digital meter, but there's no recording of it. We, we don't know when the fluctuations of the tank occur. We don't know, you know, the flows, you know, in and out of the tank and stuff like that. We, we have a, our SCADA system is a very limited SCADA system. So we did purchase a device that now will, will be able to monitor and record and know more what's going on, you know, with the system and the, the flow within and out of the tanks, you know, during the day with periods of time and stuff like that. So anyways, that's also being done. It's all just so we have a better awareness of what's going out in the system, going on out in our system. So, short-term, I, we, I do believe that we're addressing a lot of the needs, but long-term, uh, you know, I think the, what we need to do is it's just, just more, it's, it's more uncertain, you know? Uh, the population's increasing, it's going to be more difficult to meet the demands placed on our system by customers. We're having problems finding well sites and, which, you know, that's, the result is additional production. While we don't find the well sites, we're not going to have the additional production. So as a council, we need to keep in line that we have no interconnections. We are here as an island, isolated. Most systems, you have interties, you have connections with other systems, you have redundancy built into your system. If you, if you would lose a source of supply, lose a well, lose a, a pumping facility, you open a valve to the neighboring, to add an interconnection with the neighboring community, and you can bring the water and serve your customers. There's a lot of risks of processing among water systems. We don't have that luxury. So anyways, going forward, I think, and I, I believe these are issues that this council needs to, to focus on. And before I go much further, you know, I, I want to just make, mention the fact that not being critical of councils before us, might be critical of this council, this is an ongoing, changing, changing thing, you know? But when, now we, we're, we're late people, you know, retirees, we can have some professionals I'm sure are in council, but we don't have the background, we don't have the professional engineering experience and qualifications that we need to, you know, operate a water system now and in the future. And I think what we need to do is look towards professional engineering and consulting services for helping us solve some of these problems going forward. And what I was going to do is just kind of discuss what our engineering services, you know, what they bring, what are the services they could do for the village and stuff like that, but that's kind of.
What do you think the top three things are we need to address? Because I think that will help us focus on what the services need to be.
Top three things?
Top, if you, if you had top three issues you think we need to go after now?
More water. Not, not the groundwater basin, but we need, we need more production facilities. So our production has, our capacity to, um, has to increase, our production capacity has to.
Okay, so when the new well comes online, doesn't that impact that?
It will, and in the short term, that's going to be good. That may get us, allow us to, um, and I hate to, to talk without actually seeing done, because we, going through the analysis of it, getting the numbers, but hopefully that lets us get through the summer without restrictions. But there's no guarantee. We have, we were kind of fortunate, we had those three, four dry weeks, and we were pumping seventeen, eighteen hours a day, which is, that's over pump, you know?
Right, okay.
We're, we're, we're.
So if we have to have restrictions during the summer, we have to have restrictions. I've got no problem with that.
Yeah.
We need to encourage people. The guy who moved in, um, you know, the beach house, Janet, you know, by us, Brian, or Daniel, rather. He was going to put all side on his yard. I said, Daniel, stop. I said, you do not want to do that. And I explained to him about the water restrictions in the pine straw. I mean, if we have to have restrictions, I'm good, I'm good with that. That's not, I mean, and I don't mean to say that I want people to lose their lawns, but I'm more concerned about.
Well, drinking water will take precedence, so it's not, and we have to another thing, besides, you know, the rates that we just put into effect January first. Those rates were structured to encourage people to conserve. And so that should reduce the demand in the, uh, the upcoming summer. And so there are some things we need to do to encourage people to conserve water.
One thing is, why don't we, say in April, whatever it is, no irrigation systems until like ten o'clock at night, until like four in the morning, that's what we use.
That's part of the water response plan that we filed with the, with the state.
I would do it.
So it's in, and it's also, it's, well, it's also in our code, so it's, uh, it's, it's part of the village code, so. If we do hit, right now.
We gotta import, we gotta, everybody's got.
Right, as soon as we get to.
Public, and then we gotta set a date that's going to start, or we're going to go in, you gotta, you go three sixty-five.
We have to change the ordinance, because we have to change the water response plan that we filed with the state. Because that says if you get over, you pump more than ten hours a day, you go to the stage one, which is voluntary conservation. You hit twelve hours a day of pumping, and you go to a stage two. If you hit, I believe it's fourteen hours, then you're at a stage three.
We can't preempt that plan and say we're going to, we're going to encourage, um, conservation or, or certain times of usage?
But that's in, those conditions are in that plan, like it does.
I know, but if we say regardless of what the conditions are, we're going to encourage people to, to do this.
We could put out a.
There's no reason we can't do that.
We could put it on the website, or somehow put a flyer out if you want, and say, if we reach a stage one.
No, what if we don't?
Let's do it regardless.
Do it anyway.
That way the pumps are never going to run maybe more than eight hours a day, and that's what you want.
Right.
You want to keep that.
That's what, that's what the ordinance was structured to do, and that's what the water response shortage plan is structured to do, that.
No, but the question is.
If you do it on time, and we could look at, I'm, I'm, I'm not against doing that, I might say that.
It's a smart thing to do.
There's no reason to get out in front of it instead of waiting.
No, no, I agree, you want to get out in front of it. We want to educate.
That's what I think Don is saying.
We want to educate the customers that we want you to conserve, because you don't conserve, then we're going to go to restrictions.
And I don't care how hot and dry it is, you don't need to water every single day.
No, and it's definitely, definitely not during the day.
Right.
Well, and I think that is a misnomer for a lot of people, because how many times have you driven past somebody's house, it's one o'clock in the afternoon, highest part of the day or whatever, and they're out there watering? And you're going, you're wasting your time, you're wasting your money, you're wasting the water.
Well, I think we should do that, though. It's a, it's a smart thing to do.
No, I, 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 you definitely want to educate
Yeah.
the consumer that, but I, and we can, like, we could do that.
Put it on the website, at least you get all the.
Maybe March, February, March, we'll put something out there.
Signage out there to the store and.
We could recommend that they do this, but like I said, it's, it's already covered in the ordinance, it's already covered in the water response plan. But yes, we could just.
Who reads it?
Nobody reads it, that's, that's the problem, like.
So maybe the thing is, I guess, if you, the village, should we redo it? We could do a mailing, a mailer to every.
Mailing is, I think.
I think we need to go knock on doors, is what I think.
Well, no, I think what Don had said as far as, because a lot of people, a lot of people use the golf course, ask if we could put some, some flyers or put little pamphlets on the, on the desk in the pro shop area.
So the first issue we have is production.
Right.
The second issue, conservation?
I think conservation is our most important tool, and we have to work on production, but conservation is really, that's the, that's the bottom.
Conservation will buy us time.
That's a root, that's a root cause.
Because we gotta wait till Moore County decides to, to bring that line down, Hoffman. We, I will absolutely stand on my head and spit rocks if we decide to spend a few million dollars bringing it down. So we're going to need to work, in my opinion, within what we have.
On the short term, which is what we're doing, that's why.
So production is one, if we get a trial, production's one, conservation is two.
Right.
What's the third thing?
Probably the third thing is the
I don't even know.
Sure, there's a, there's a, the reliability issues, that your equipment's got to be up and running, you got to be able to, and we're in pretty good shape with that.
Well, that's a given, keeping your, keeping your equipment, you know?
Did you get a feedback on number six yet?
Nope.
Have they looked at it?
They videotaped it, and they were supposed to rush it last week, and they were not out last week.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we will go through this and.
I read through it, like I said, I was going to go through and talk about.
We just identified, and we look at the consultants, we have to be able to figure out what we need those people to do, because we don't need them to do everything.
No.
We can't afford to have them do everything.
True.
Essentials.
Yep.
All right.
Why don't you pick out like three, Warren, that you're comfortable with, and then put the proposal together and see what happens?
Okay. Well, the other thing is, we do want to build a relationship with a local firm, consulting firm. And we do have besides the, like I said, there's the engineering services, there's, you know, and like I said, if you just read through the notes here, that'll, that'll help you out a little bit, understand where we're coming from. We also have smaller projects that, that need professionals to do, and then PEs, guidance, and and decision-making on things like the, again, mentioned at a previous meeting about the elevated, uh, tank maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, until we can find out whether or not we need to take that tank out of service at this, at this time, you know, you have to delay the maintenance on it. But we have that ten-year maintenance agreement, and hopefully, within the next two years, we can take the tank out of service, have the interior cleaned and, and re-coated, because it'll do it within the, by the end of probably twenty-five, twenty-six. And again, I mentioned at a previous meeting about our, our SCADA system. Our SCADA system is an old radio unit. We have a local vendor from up in Robbins that does the maintenance on it. You can't buy the parts for it and stuff like that. A SCADA system, you know, supervisor, control and data acquisition system, you know, they control, they monitor, they analyze your, your processes. And, and it's something that, again, you need a, you need a consultant's assistance and, and deciding what your needs are.
We also have to be very careful with.
And it's expensive proposition.
Well, not only that, but those systems are extremely vulnerable to hacking these days, the water systems.
Right.
And we need to make sure that, that that's the only good thing about the system we have right now.
Yeah, no kidding, nobody's going to hack it.
It's so old.
That is true.
Well, you know what, it's funny, but there's something to be said for that.
There's something said for the old radio units and stuff like that, that, that's true.
Saying that's the.
There's a market out there for replacement parts and things like that, that would, that would be, that would be.
But we need to be very, very cautious about.
When is the new well now supposed to come online? Because some of this production stuff, we can't really, until that well is online and pumping, there's no point in guessing at that. We know that, we know the village is going to tag out about twenty-one hundred people, right? In the land use plan?
Twenty, yeah, that's about.
That's a, that's a, so we, we know pretty much what the population's going to look like. So, once we get the new well up, we ought to be able to take a pretty good look at production.
Okay.
I would, I mean, that's what I would think. But when's it supposed to come up?
Well, it's supposed to be, we hope by the end of the year, and that's not going to happen at the end of the years right now. Um, I can tell you that we've been in contact with.
I thought they said November.
And I, again, I'm a little discouraged, you know, to say the least, if this thing isn't in service.
Up in North Carolina.
But we were promised that they, they were going to be out before the end of the year, and, um, the engineer, consulting engineer, he's done his plans and stuff, they've been submitted to the state. So the next step is, just to be in construction, we have to get a permit to, to construct from the state. We have not been issued, as, as of last week, we don't have a permit to construct. And again, the wells drilled, we're talking the piping, the wellhouse, the intertie to the distribution system. So when we get that, and the contractor comes out, it, we're not talking about, we don't do it.
Have you been in contact with the contractor?
Mm-hmm.
When was the last time?
Last week.
And what did he say?
They're, they're working, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um. What's that? Yeah, well, uh, so anyways, and in line with what we were just talking about, again, going back to professional services and stuff, and what is going on, you know, the county's reviewing their, uh, strategy for water supply, I gave you a copy of the, the newspaper article, just in line with that, they're another.
They're struggling as well. I know they, they make it sound like they can build whatever they want, whatever they want, but they are struggling as well.
But, but another use that I could see, a consulting firm benefiting, that's would be looking for a. But another use that I could see, a consulting firm benefiting, that's would be looking for grants and stuff. And there is a grant out there and it's one that I think we wanna maybe look at, having a, an engineering firm delve into us a little more for us. I don't know what it would cost us to hire a firm to look at it. But there's a grant, and the grant is for the intertie to a regional water...
Yeah, but we don't wanna do that yet.
Well, no, but if the county is working with the city of, or town of Southern Pines, they're gonna, they're, when they start to put their costs together and stuff like that, it would be nice to know and through this, you know, that a study that's already been done, whether or not this is something that we wanna participate in and whether we would participate upfront. And it would give us an idea, and, and there's a grant out there to do that. You know, it's, um...
How much is the grant?
Uh, the, the grant's up to a hundred...
Up to a hundred fifty thousand.
Up to a hundred fifty thousand, right.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Well, that's, that's just a, that's just a study and we're just a piece of it. You know, it's not for their study, it would be a piece of how we would have the...
That's the grant for the study?
For the study project, for the connection, what we'd have to do. But it's something, you know, cause of, you know, they're, they wanna encourage regional water authorities. That's, you know, there's, there's benefits to economies of scale and building redundancies and...
But it makes Foxfire a big target for overgrowth.
Yeah.
It does.
It does, yeah, it does.
I, I, I am all for connecting. When Moore County brings it down Hoffman and it doesn't cost us a thing.
Right, yeah. And I do, you know, obviously, we don't wanna run out of water, but for us to...
Well, this thing, like, we can do it in the short term to try to prevent that.
Well, and that's what's, we have to prevent that.
And as long as, go ahead, see the...
No, I was just gonna say, we have to prevent that and we have to, we have to get this well online. That's the first thing we really have to do. And that's gotta be, that's gotta be, we can't really even do much of anything else because that's an unknown.
Right.
That's an unknown and we need to get these guys...
The other, the other thing is the conservation part, it's gonna have to have some big teeth in it.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to have some monetary teeth in it.
Well, you do have that in the response plan.
Yeah, but we might have to be a little, we might have to have bigger teeth. It's gonna hack a few people off, don't do that intentionally. But when word gets out that if you violate the conservation measures, you're gonna pay, people are gonna stop it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think we do have made a little bit of progress. I mean, at least I've got some guidance on the, we're definitely focused on the short term here. And like I said, I do believe though, we need to, to give some serious thought to also the long range solution to the, the water issues here in the village, so...
I agree, okay. Does that, does that wrap you up?
That wraps me up.
Okay, we've got our last item on the, on the agenda is the pool.
The most important thing here.
I know.
I mean, really.
It's the hot tub and toilet.
Why do we don't need a pool?
I know. Well, we're saving forty thousand gallons a month.
Right, yeah.
Sixty. Um, okay, so a couple things, just to kinda bring you all up to date. First of all, they did start removing the deck and he, he took this week off because number one, the cold and the holidays. So I told him, "Fine, no big deal, just get it done." Um, so they're gonna start up again on Monday. Should probably take them maybe three, four days to finish. And Danny is going to start working on, he's got all the permits. Uh, the pumping, the pump house is gonna start working on in January. We're on the calendar, depending on weather. And I've told you guys that about a hundred times. The weather has to remain over forty degrees, day and night, for at least three or four days, for them to do the interior of the pool. So if it looks like it's sixty degrees today, but it's gonna be thirty-two at night, can't do it.
Yeah.
So just so you know, I mean, you know, we're staying on top of that. The drains in the bathrooms are supposed to be done in January, so we're moving along. All right, so that's that.
Before you leave, do we have, for the operation of it, if you contact like a management company or what's...
What are you talking about?
The operation of the pool once we open it up?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna, what we're gonna probably do, okay, you're talking...
Are we gonna operate ourselves, you know, the management company do it or...
No, we're not doing that.
So we'll be there as a pool?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Um, so I'm gonna sit down with Lisa, we're gonna probably put some ads in the paper. Uh, we have to start probably getting those in in February, cause we need at least twelve to fourteen people hired, kids, whatever. Um, we are gonna need a pool manager and so she's gonna help me with that. And we'll get moving on that now. And that's probably going to be our biggest obstacle is stepping. And keep in mind, you know, middle of August is when everybody starts going back to school. That's why in the past years, you know, the pool hours have been reduced because we didn't have staff. And we have to have at least two people on staff at a time. You know, in case somebody has to take a break or whatever, so that we're gonna start working on it.
Okay.
Okay, so the other issue we have, real quick, the septic at the village hall, the fire department, and where else?
Police.
Police, that, that was all done, that's been done. Um, we've run into an obstacle at the park, the, in a big obstacle. The piping, the, the septic tank is not located where the state said, or county says it is. And he showed me, I went up there, they dug the hole, pipe's right there and it stops right at, you know, where the bulletin board is, stops right there by the cement. So, we can't locate that septic tank right now and I'm gonna have the landscaper pull out those plants. Hopefully, it's under the dirt where the plants are, I don't think so. It might be under the pavers. If it's under the pavers, those are gonna have to come out. If it's under the cement, you know, that goes around...
I wonder if we put the cement in after the septic was...
Oh, I'm sure we did, yeah.
Sure they would've, yeah.
Yeah, but that's the problem. I mean, I saw where the pipe ends, right next to the cement.
So the pipe doesn't end at the, the tank?
Well, no, the pipe, the pipe keeps going under the cement.
Okay.
So that's one...
So the tank just traced the pipe down to the, the tank?
Well, no, because it's under the cement.
It's under the cement or the, if you, when you go on there...
I can try to picture, I think the cement's just a sidewalk, it's more just a sidewalk.
Well, there's the sidewalk, okay? We have the bushes, we have the pavers, so it, we'll find it. So that's one issue. The other issue, when we, he was gonna pump the septic tank at the pool, there's a big hole in the tank. And it's not what...
I'm sorry, you're just a money pit.
I know. Yeah, I, I, I told Diana some, I'm finding more and more ways to spend taxpayers' money.
Oh, it's just every time you turn over anything.
But you know what, before the village really grew, there, we didn't, we didn't pay attention to this kind of stuff. It was, everything was such low use and we didn't have any people.
Well, the issue with it though, and it's not the hole where they actually put the hose in to drain it. Okay, this is an actual hole in the tank.
I got it.
And, um, and I said, well, and the way they fixed it is they put a cement block over it. And I said, shouldn't that have been replaced at the time they found that big hole? And the answer was yes. Um, so we're doing it now and that's gonna be thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. We'll be approving a budget amendment for that at our next council meeting.
So, just going back to the pool?
Yeah.
I was gonna be kinda, this is a discussion and stuff like that. I, I just, there are some questions out there. I could go, if we decided what we're gonna pay employee of the pool?
No, we haven't gotten it.
What are we gonna pay the manager of the pool?
Or if we, you know what, I'm not gonna discuss that now because we have discussed it.
Yeah, okay.
I know where you're going, but, um...
I was kinda curious about it.
You know, we're kinda just thinking along the lines of what the management company was paying the attendants last year. So we're gonna have to throw all that around.
All right.
I'm sure, you've talked to the county, right? And said, "Hey, by the way, the septic system's not where you said it was," and made them come out here cause they certified it.
I could do that, that's a good, that's a good...
Well, no, I'm just saying, because they have a piece of information that we don't have and they may go, "Oh, yeah, well, it ended up, you know, over here." They know where it is.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
You know, the problem is that it's been there since oh-six.
Well, a lot of people at the county have been here since oh-six, I mean, they don't...
No, you know what, I don't give them a holiday tomorrow.
Yes.
So it's not on the, it's not on our drawings?
Well, it's not on the drawings that they gave us. It's, it's on the drawings, no, but it's not in, it's not where... The only drawings we would have where that septic tank is, is what we acquired from the county. We didn't create our own.
And, and if you stick them on it and say, "Hey, look, it's not where you said it was, you need to find it." Make them find it.
Okay. Yeah, but here's the issue. I mean, if we make them find it, and I understand exactly what you're saying, they're gonna say, "Okay, you gotta remove all this."
Well, maybe it's not where you think it is.
Well, remember, the park is for the enjoyment of everyone in the county, right? Well, is it, I mean, it is, right? I'm not trying to stick it to them, I'm just saying.
No, and, no, I totally agree with you. And I'm glad you brought it up, cause that's a good point.
I don't wanna spend any more money than we have to, Janet.
You know, no, 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 I agree. Um, you know, so I will handle that one delicately because you don't wanna piss the people off.
No, 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 no.
No, but I will make it very clear that we would like their assistance in locating it.
I'm surprised they haven't been like that.
Say what?
No, like when they built the park, they had the engineering firm come in, lay it out, lay out where the septic's gonna go in. Those are our drawings. They, they finished, they made ass notes, they turned the ass notes back into the village.
They're our drawings.
And so we got the drawings and just...
Lisa's got them.
Yeah, just go.
But the tank isn't there.
No, I know that.
Right, but what is it where the tank is? The tank isn't where it's drawn.
Correct, that's the issue.
That's what we need, septic tank, M.I.A.
I'm not sure, I'm not, yeah, I'm sure it's, that's the county's...
Well, you know, they, they inspected. Here's the problem. You know, it's from oh-six, so how many years are we looking at that that has been...
You would've, I'll bet you, I'll bet you the county has some, I'll just bet you they have some.
But, Mary, we, we got it from the county, literally.
You never know.
I, I, no, I have it, I called them, they submitted it to me.
Move on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done.
That's a good idea.
Okay, we're moving on now to public comments. Are there any, are there any public comments?
No.
No, none being, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at five thirty-seven.